We're going first. I don't say anything bad. All right. All right. And it looks like there's one attendee. Okay. Yeah, it looks like Paul and yeah, Jan Blair. Okay. All right. You want to start up the meeting?
We'll officially call the meeting to order and we'll get on with our one agenda item. Actually, we're gonna, after the presentation, we're going to have Larry's gonna kind of give us an update on village operations of COVID-19 and kind of some of the ways forward. But the first and only agenda item is Paul Ficalora's proposal on Main Street Plaque, or Main Street Plaque Project, which is apparently not easy for me to say. So Larry, unmute Paul or how are we gonna do this?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me put him. And there he is. Okay. And he gets on live there.
There he is.
Hi, Paul. You're...
There we go.
There you go. Hi, Paul.
Hi.
Hey, so I do see that Earl has signed in. Did you want him to be joining you?
If you can join us, absolutely. That'd be great.
Okay. And was there anyone else you were expecting or?
No, just Earl.
All right. That's fine. Thanks. Let me... Just give a second here. Okay. Okay. I'm not sure if he's gonna come in with video or not, but anyway, that's, you're, you're, you're there. So...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody know how I can get a virtual hair?
So Paul, did you want to maybe, you know, kind of go through the, the, the letter? Or, you know, it doesn't have to be verbatim, the letter, but just, you know, kind of present what was in the body of the letter to everyone?
Sure. I'd be happy to. So this started actually over five years ago, we had the idea of the Irvington Landmark Preservation Committee, that has had the idea that we'd like to give some recognition to the individuals that the streets along Main Street were named after, just as, just as a, as a way of really just kind of revealing some of the history and having Irvington kind of stand out as being a bit of an historic town. And so the thought was, well, where, where would we put these, you know, if we wouldn't do plaques? Because the Irvington Landmark Preservation Committee is known for putting plaques on historical sites as we've done in variety of places in the village. So we thought, well, this would be a great idea. So we have to do some homework on all the history of the individuals. And then if we did get plaque, where on earth would we put them? And we came up the idea that there's no better place than putting right in the corners where they, a V Street. So as tourists walk by or Irvington residents walk by, they see these. So that was the concept that we had. And then we, we drew up a draft for each street. And then we said, okay, well, now we have to have the experts take a look at it. So we had the Historical Society, Pat Ryan looked at it. And then a couple of other people, very accomplished people from there examined it as well for historical accuracy. And we were looking for brevity, interesting and accurate. And so that's pretty much what it came to. I was particularly concerned about making sure that they were similar in the amount of copy so that the plaques would be the same size. So it wouldn't be... One particular name might have a lot more or less than someone else. So that was a concern that, and that was part of the editing that we, that took place. As you can see, some of them are seven, I think the smallest one is the Croton Aqueduct and Croton Place with seven lines. I think the longest is about 12 lines. So the idea is, is that we now have historical copy. We have a budget. We had Sign Extreme come up with a budget for that. It totaled 13,500. In the past, the village has shared 50% of our plaques. That number for us, the 6750, we have all the funds, but that's about all the funds we have. So we will have to do a fundraiser after this, using this as, as the, as the carrot to raise the funds. But we certainly can move forward with getting this done if the village agrees to, A, getting it done, and B, funding a half or at least half of it. So my, my question to everyone now, I don't know if you've read the letter or read whatever, how does everyone feel about this concept?
I mean, Connie's talking, but I can't hear.
No, I can't hear.
Yeah, hold on a second.
I can't hear Connie.
Yeah, you're not muted, so. No.
Can't hear you. Try muting yourself and then unmuting. Sometimes that works. Now unmute. See if that helps. No.
I don't... Yeah, I don't think the problem's on our end. I can't, we can't, we're unmuted, so I can't do anything.
Sometimes it's a matter of logging off and logging back on.
Yeah, maybe. Do you have a little microphone button down in the bottom left corner? Of the screen, in the bottom left corner, is there a little microphone there? Yeah, well...
Is your sound volume all the way up?
Oh, yeah. Connie, did you put your sound on? Is your computer volume on? From your keyboard?
Yeah.
Mark, I can't hear you either.
All right. She just looks like she... She left the meeting and may, may come back, so...
I was intentionally muted. Sit here and don't make any guffaws until I'm ready to talk.
Right. All right. Hold on here. Guess we should have tested that out before we went live, huh?
But we've had these meetings before and it's been okay?
Yeah, I know. And everyone's had...
Is Connie in a different location, maybe?
I don't know.
It looked like it was different, but I don't know.
So when you first come up, if you don't select use computer or audio, then you're messed up.
Yeah, right.
I mean, worst comes to worst, you can use your cellphone or whatever.
Do you have a joke for us, Brian?
No, but I just saw, it was an interesting article. It was the most popular cocktails searched for in each state. I was looking through what New York's was.
I thought it was the Quarantini.
Yeah, let's see. I, it's alphabetical. So I mean, Indiana, Kentucky, many Ms. Let's see, Nevada was, New Hampshire, we're so close, New Jersey, New York to Manhattan. That's kind of boring.
That's funny.
But I like Manhattan, Brian.
Keep it kind of classy. Alabama was the hurricane. That's a...
That's too obvious.
Maybe, maybe this is a good time, Paul, to recognize the contribution of Eric Weiselmanberg, who is the village historian, and Chet Kerr. Those were the two people at the Historical Society other than Pat Ryan, who helped us tremendously with the editing of these plaques. And certainly Eric and Chet put in a lot of time getting the, you know, just verifying the historical accuracy of everything.
They were extremely helpful. We went back and forth. They, they fine tuned what we had and verified and added. It's actually pretty fascinating. This was an interesting exercise about all these, these people on here. So it was enjoyable to learn about some of the details. This is just a small abbreviation of all of it, but, but it was, it was enjoyable. And these two men, obviously, were real experts in getting down to the, the history, the genuine history versus what you could just surf on the net to find. They, they knew exactly what the details were. So that, that gave us a comfort level that, because we're putting this, you know, in bronze and cement, so we wanted... It was gonna be, no one was gonna question it.
Oh, they may still question it, but at least we have that comfort.
Yes, yes.
That it was well researched.
Certainly better than Wikipedia.
Yeah, definitely. And the naming of the project, the naming of the streets was a project of Arthur C. Lord, a village historian. And it was approved by the village board in 1932 to name the streets as they're named now. Just a little background.
So I, I think, you know, just quickly, having had a chance to look at the size of the signs, I have a little bit of a concern with having those embedded in sidewalk. And it's not some, there's, you know, that, believe it or not, an eighth of an inch is, is actually still a tripping hazard, potentially, if they're raised letters. But the, if you don't raise the letters and you do them recessed, the sign itself is probably, is probably slippery, which is a problem. So I'm not sure that the sidewalk thing is, is the right answer, at least for this plaques of this size. If it was maybe something smaller, it might work, but then the, the text and the, the copy that you have obviously wouldn't work. But I think we're just, I'm just throwing it out there to, as a concern that I have. I'm not, I'm not suggesting I have a solution to it either, by the way, but it's a, it's a concern.
Well, the letters within the plaque would be raised, but everything would be flushed to the level of the, the cement of the sidewalk. So it's not going to be raised above the level. So I don't think there's any tripping hazard. You know, the reason why I came up with this suggestion, and Earl did as well, about plaques in the ground there is because if you go into New York City, there's a variety of places where you're gonna find plaques in the ground. Right on, if you go 42nd Street and Park Avenue South, there's been plaques there since they built that building, which is probably about 20 years ago. So if they're willing to do that in New York City with all the traffic there, I don't know. If they were an issue with the people slipping on or whatever, I think that would have, then they would have removed them. So and a variety of other places in the city and almost any other city. I kind of crossed plaques in San Francisco last summer, so...
So I have similar concerns to Larry. I expressed them to the board in, in an email. You know, I just want to point out that plaques at an angle, which most of our streets have fairly heavy grade on them, may be, may be an issue with sloping. But my biggest problem is which corner would get them, or they're not gonna, they can't really be in the corner. So they have to be positioned correctly at the, you know, away from the ramps and all that kind of stuff so that they're not creating a problem with accessibility or visibility. You don't want people just, you know, hanging out and then blocking the rest of the access. So all that's, you know, could be gotten around, but the other issue is that the, you know, which corner does it go on, for instance? So that, that to me, you'd have to either have a common corner that's all of them or you'd have to decide some plan to shuffle them around to various corners at each intersection.
Mark, we were thinking, we were thinking that they would go on the southwest corners of each side street instead of trying to do it on both the south and the north side of Main Street. Just put them on the southwest of each side street. And now there may be one and another exception to that, Paul, if you mind me. Further up Main Street where we have, what is it, North Astor Street? No, not North Dearman. What is that?
Dearman's the last one before, before Broadway. Right?
I, I believe so. There's, there's an aqueduct lane, is there not? And that's on the north side of Main Street. Is that, yeah. Okay. That was the exception I was thinking of.
Right.
Yeah, the, just, Mark, the, the reason why we figured the southwest corner is because when people get off the train, there is a natural walking path. There's lines on the street that guide the people to go up that side of the street. And having taken that train at night and coming home, that's where everybody walks out. So I figured if you're a tourist coming into the village, you're gonna walk up that side of the street. But of course, that's up to, if you want to take a closer look at it, you feel it should be on the other side of the street. That, that's up to, to you. That's fine. But that was just the logic that, that we felt would make sense. That's all. If you want us to, I mean, I can go back to the sign maker and see if he can make a smaller sign. But the question and the reason why he came up with this size is because obviously you're gonna be standing there looking at it and you have to be able to read it. And that's why they came up with the size that they did. Would it be conceivable for it to be a little bit smaller and still be legible? I can approach that and be happy to see what we can do on that.
Yeah, it's probably, probably not a, a lot of ability to make it that much smaller. I talked with Tyler a little bit just to discuss some options. And it sounded to me, with this level of copy, there wouldn't be an ability to make it that much smaller, I don't think.
Yeah, I think the issue is gonna be you have to be able to read it while you're standing up.
Yeah, of course.
Go down to read it.
Yeah.
Paul, I don't know if the, the, the display in New York City you were referring to is the one that leads straight to the entrance to the New York Public Library, but that is just beautiful. I don't, I think it'd be not 42nd Street, but 40th or 38th. But there are plaques embedded in the pavement on both sides that have illustrations from books and brief quotations that you will find if you keep walking and get to the... It's really impressive and lovely. Of course, people stop to read them when people bump into them, which can be a problem. But the concept, I certainly know what you're talking about and I've seen it and it can be beautiful. One thought that I had, just as you were talking about, the natural traffic progression is up the south side of the street. We're taking a look at the whole access, the whole portal to Irvington and directing people from the train into the village. And nobody suggested that that's gonna change the pedestrian wood traffic pattern, but just, that should be one thing to consider.
That's fine. I mean, I really felt that you, you, you know, you're bored in the manner we make the final determination on the location of that based on the plans that you just discussed about.
Connie, say something so we know you're really here.
Um, oh, you are. I, I could hear some of you, like, but can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hi. So I'm so sorry. I missed some of this. It's all buried here to my heart, but, and I hate to ask for a summary of what you said, but... Please, just keep going.
Well, I think we talked about the, you know, they, they obviously summarized their proposal, but then, you know, I had expressed a concern about plaques in the sidewalk from a tripping standpoint. There's probably plenty of examples where that is not an issue. We're talking about the size of the signs potentially being an issue, but that's, and I, and I think that's pretty much all we've covered, right? Unless I think I missed something?
And some examples, I heard Janice mentioning the public library somewhere, New York.
In the New York Public Library, embedded in the street heading to the library. There's many on both sides of the street with illustrations and quotes from various works of literature.
Right, right. And the, the aqueduct, the new crossing over the, the river, when you're in the Bronx and from the Bronx to Manhattan, there are, in the, I'll call it pavement, there are interesting symbols with some words. I, I think some of you might have taken that trip with the Friends of the Aqueduct, gone across there. No? Okay. But it's another example. I could say, I could show you some pictures. But what I was gonna say is that I'm, I'm, you know, of course, I'm very interested in adding historic features to the village. And obviously, this discussion is about how does it manifest itself, this particular proposal? And I don't know if anybody brought up yet, but I, I did review, I sent to the board, some of the parts of our, Earl would know this well, the Main Street Streetscape Planning Document. Paul, are you familiar with that? It's from about...
2014?
Yeah, yeah, 14, right.
Yeah. At the, at the time, I do remember looking at that, yes.
Um, we could certainly send you. I think Earl is pretty familiar with it. Has some references to just this particular idea of marking historic features. And it, it talks about something on the wall or something in the sidewalk, but not too much text, kind of warned against, you know, not being too heavy with, with, with text and words and ways to overcome that. So you want to convey a lot of information. You don't necessarily want people stopping and kind of being overwhelmed by too much text. I know you were sensitive to that when you tried to get down probably 10 pages to seven lines.
Definitely.
Which is, which is hard, but they, one other document that Mark and I and Larry worked on pretty hard with a consultant was called the Way Finding Sinage Proposal. Again, that's, you know, it's, it's a style, a look of, of, you know, sort of determining a consistent look across the mostly downtown, but other areas of signage, not, not street signs per se, but the other kind of how you find things, kiosks and that. So those are two important documents, and I think everybody knows the, the design guide for the historic district. Earl certainly knows that intimately. So I kind of, when I thought about your proposal and also another proposal that's been floating around a bit about the enslaved African pop in Irvington, they too have been interested in having something on Main Street. So when I think about the specific proposals, I like to think that just back to the planning documents that provide a context, an overall kind of roadmap for how those specific proposals could fit in. So long background, I'm sorry, but the final piece of it was a recent thing. And that is because Irvington is close to the New Bridge, we, we're part of something called a, a mobile phone app produced at quite an expense, but not our expense, by a commercial group called Travel Stories. And they have a contract with the Bridge Authority. And we are one of those communities that get to feature our history, our restaurants, our businesses on a kiosk right there on the, the gateway to the, to the bridge. And also, it's a, you can, you can download it now and see all the things that Travel Stories does. So we are just writing the script for Irvington. And we have a little section called the Alphabet Soup, which was the main street system of the streets going A, B, C, D, etc. So I asked them if they could embed the paragraphs of information into their GPS-controlled Travel Stories narrative. And, and they said, yes, of course, we can do that. So that's just, all this is food for thought on how best to proceed, but those are some tools. I think that if we bring them into our thinking, and of course, I'm not a design person. I think Mark is probably the closest to an artist on our, on our board. But if it came to it to plan a project that would fit in and we couldn't do it ourselves, maybe Steve Tilly, maybe our, our Kim Lee Horn that we just hired for the Astor Street, maybe at a fairly small fee, they might look at your proposal and this other proposal and give us a little bit of advice on how those two projects might fit in to a master plan effectively. So that's my, that's my, my long introduction to what I think about this great project.
So Connie, I mean, in, I don't know that we needed a consultant to tell us what we should be doing. I think that's overthinking it. It's a pretty straightforward proposal. The fact that it can be connected to an electronic app by GPS is nice, too. The fact that I think everyone agrees we should probably address the African slave information story as well somehow. The one thing I wanted to key off of was you were talking about the Irvington Style Guide for Sinage. And I was thinking about the plaques, and the one thing that came to my mind yesterday was, you know, perhaps the top of the plaque should have that infamous clock tower logo on it. So it's not just a rectangular plaque, but it has a little bit of decoration at the top. And maybe it needs to say something besides just be a paragraph of text. You know, maybe there needs to be a title per plaque or a plaque, you know, like a, a name of the project, shall we say, you know? Two or three word header for, that would tie all the plaques.
Yeah, like namesake, street names, something. Right. This is where I...
Alphabet Soup.
I don't know. Where Larry Schopper and I always say, okay, we don't, we don't have the design.
No, I'm an accountant. Come on.
I'm a, I'm a little closer being a historian than anything else, but that's why it's, you know, I, I understand, Mark, because you, you could probably do this as a profession and do it very well, but...
I just key off of what you said, Connie, about wanting to tie stuff together. My, my only concern is that if these are, the plaques are left, in this, in this context, if the plaques are just dumped into the sidewalk, and sorry for that word, placed into the sidewalk carefully, they still don't have a context exactly. So, you know, that's where I think some of the guidelines from the Sinage Style Guide can give us a way of tying, sort of tying them together to make it seem like a, a larger thought, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. I, I get that. And then when I looked at the paragraph from the Streetscape, I, I think I forward that to the board members. It, it gives you the suggestion that some kind of image would be some, something that would pull it together and then some text, but they were very wary of a lot of text on the building or in the, in the sidewalk. Both, both things they, they suggested, an image or a piece of, you know, they said art, but I don't, you know, don't mean like the Mona Lisa in the sidewalk, so. But I, I, that's why I got stymied at that point. Having looked at all the documents, I couldn't say, I see how you could integrate the standards for the ways finding, the guidelines from the Streetscape, merge those together with Paul and Earl's proposal and then also Sarah Cox's proposal, put that together and have a nice kind of finalized look about some of the history of Irvington. So that's why I said, for maybe, I don't know, a couple thousand dollars, somebody could look at those documents, look at the proposals and say, here's an idea. That's, that's why I came to that, because I didn't think I could take the next step.
Well, I guess my question is, do we, to Paul or Earl, do we have photographs or anything of the original folks these streets are named after? Or even drawing, I mean, I don't know, you know, photo engravings or whatever. I don't know what time period we're talking about exactly, but... So what kind of visual material is there related to them, if any?
Yeah, there, there are various.
There are various time periods insofar as when these characters were influential in Irvington and when they lived here. I'm sure that somewhere there must be images, whether we could get, you know, in, in the, for the sake of consistency and graphic, you know, standards for each plaque. There may be a character whose photograph we cannot find. I don't know, but I can look into it a little bit and see what we have out there.
I wouldn't say, John Buckout died in 1785, that's when he died. I don't think we have a photograph of him.
There may be a painting, there may be a sketch or drawing. I mean, again, you're going to really have to simplify these in terms of graphically, because there's really, you know, you're dealing with port bronze plaques, so, you know, it's got to become very iconic in a...
And we think...
What we're talking about now is design of the plaque itself, which is different than the text that would go on the plaque, which is, I think, what Paul and Earl have presented to us, and, you know, great effort taken to make these consistent in length and style, and very easy to read from that distance of walking along the sidewalk. But how they're going to be designed and what the visual will be, I think, is a different issue that you perhaps haven't gotten to yet, and that's what we're starting to talk about here, and I'm not sure this is the place to finalize the design. My main concern is that we do this in a way that's all, makes it somewhat, a bit large in the sense that it incorporates some sort of memorial to the enslaved people of Irvington. Some of the first fathers, first families of whom we will have plaques for were slave owners, and it is...
And in speaking, and in speaking about the, the text, I think, you know, I think Buckout was, and I think that, that both Chet and, and Dr. W were, were part of Sarah's research as well.
Right, and I'm not suggesting the plaque should say, was, you know, and Asterix was also a slaveholder. That's not what I mean at all, but just that we do need to acknowledge that part as a real part of our history, and that these people who sadly are not named, need to be acknowledged somehow in this, in this project. For me, I, the idea of plaques in the street, judging from what I've seen in New York City, I think they can be beautiful. I think, I agree with what Mark and Connie are saying, that this needs to fit into the better, bigger design with a bigger project, and it seems like some thought, you know, the next step is to figure out what's the design of the plaques. And this is the group to debate it right now.
I, I just wanted to say, my only point, I was supporting Connie, but I also think we all, I mean, I'm assuming we're all agreeing that the plaque on the African Americans' slaves and, and that historical information really should be wrapped into this as all one kind of project to make it a whole. But the other, I just want to point out as a warning is, anything that extends beyond, you know, the text on a plaque is going to change the cost of the quote that we have so far, so it becomes, whatever comes up as a design, if there is a redesign beyond just text on a plaque, would have to obviously go to sign extreme for them to price out.
Well, you know, I met with Sarah Cox, and we, and, and, you know, I listened to her presentation along with Kathy Sears, and the Irvington Landmark Preservation Committee supports the initiative that they are, you know, getting in front of and presenting to everybody, so we don't have any problem with that. And I spoke to Sarah in my discussion, I don't know whether you've had a subsequent conversation with her, but she would, didn't know, because we talked about a plaque, and she wasn't sure, well, should that be on Main Street? Should it be near the train station guiding people to where the actual cemetery was, or should it be at the cemetery? And then they want to have a, a beautiful statue. I know they've got a wonderful artist designed to create a sculpture. They didn't know whether, I think they did come up with a size, it was a smaller size. And should that be on Main Street or where that should be, they didn't know. And I think that's a presentation that they have to make to you, if not, maybe they already have, I'm not sure.
They have, and we do need to hear that.
And, yeah.
Well, you know what we do.
Well, yeah, and things have been, things have been delayed, as you can imagine, you know, on both sides. But right now, the, the agreement that we have is that they'll be back for the June work session, June 10th. So, and that'll be a chance for them to present what's on their mind.
So with that in mind, thinking that they were going to do a plaque, we figured, well, we're all set, because that's not going to be left alone. That's going to be taken care of, and, and certainly Sarah and Kathy are pretty, pretty bright and, and really agenda-minded to get that done, so they have to raise funds for, for the, for the statue that they would like to create as well.
And Paul, I think you, you did mention that the Irvington Landmark Preservation Group are in support of
Absolutely.
that effort, and, and as well, would try to create a plaque for that purpose as well.
So that we're not talking competition coordination.
Yeah. Be a separate project, but, you know.
And, I mean, I think to sum it up, too, I think we're all in support of this concept. We just have to figure out the details. I think we're also in support of, of, you know, putting a significant portion of the cost. You know, so I think that, you know, there's, there's obviously a lot of details to figure out from a design perspective, from where we're laying it out, from safety issues, all the things that we have. But I think that, you know, I think we're all on board with trying to figure this out and getting this project done.
Absolutely.
And we just want to, we want to have it be, you know, you know, part of a bigger, you know, we've been, we keep talking about continuing to not do things piecemeal, like buying one bench, but kind of do things systematically. So I think this is part of that, you know, that fit, this fits very well into that whole concept of trying to do everything systematically in the downtown to make it all pull together and look great, so. I think we just have to figure out those details. I think that, you know, I think the research that's been done is certainly, you know, gets us to a certain point where now it's literally designed as opposed to having to figure out, you know, do we have the right people, the right information? I think that's all great, so it's not like anything's been wasted. You know, I think the only potential time constraint is if we decide to do it in the ground, then we have the, obviously, the project coming up, so that would be time-sensitive, but, you know, I think that we can figure things out, if we want to go that route or not, before that. So I think we, you know, I don't think we have a, we have a, we have a clock ticking, but it's not ticking that loudly yet, so I think we can figure out these details.
What does the timeline look like?
Say again?
The timeline on the street improvements project that, that the plaque project would have to coordinate with, what's that timeline?
That work is scheduled to start sometime in early July. But I mean, I think the mechanics of it, I could be wrong on it, but the mechanics are that, you know, if we can at least settle on a, on a size, you know, that's the important thing, because then we can, we can leave the, you know, the, the piece of plywood or whatever goes into the ground underneath that it gets mounted into at the proper depth. You know, the, the size is the important thing, whether, whether we have the copy settled is not necessarily, you know, the critical, the critical time, timeline.
I was just going to say, two questions, or one comment, one question. I was going to say, not just the size, but the shape.
Yeah, right, yes.
But my second question was, how much of the corner where it's being, where the ADA accessibility is being put in place, et cetera, how much of that corner is actually being modified? Because this makes me wonder that we should definitely decide where it goes. If everyone's okay with the southwest corner, it's still, where does it go within that, you know, eight by eight foot area of, that is essentially the corner?
Sure, I'll tell you what, let me take, I don't want to get that deep into it, but just so everyone can, can visualize it. Let me see if I can share a document here on the screen to show you an example. It happens to be Buckout Street, to show you what the southwest corner would, would look like. There's a couple of exceptions going up Main Street, but this is a good example anyway, hold on. All right, so this is, this is Buckout Street, and the southwest corner is here. If you can see my, I think you can see my little hand there, right? Okay, so that, there's bump outs that are designed, as, as you know, you approve them specifically. There's bump outs to create the shorter crossings here. And so I think there's real estate in this area here. We'd obviously have to make sure it doesn't interfere with any ramping. This is, this is part of a, you know, handicap down ramp here. So, but I think there's a, there's a possibility it could work. There may also be real estate out here, more towards the corner, but I'm, I'm not sure that's the right place for someone to be standing to read a plaque, but maybe it is. But we can work out those details. I, I don't, I, I don't know much more than that until we really get out in the field. There is more, generally speaking, by the way, there is more real estate across the street on the, on the northwest corner or the north side of the street. As you can see, the bump outs are larger because, because of the angled parking. But again, that's, that's all the give and take of this whole thing.
I'm not sure that the, that the bump out being larger on the north side. In other words, I don't think that we need more real estate than what I'm seeing on the south, on the south side.
Right, yeah, again, we have to pull out...
Typical, is this typical of each street? I seem to recall that being part of the proposal for the Streetscape Master Plan, that this condition would happen at every intersection.
Yeah, it's, it's just about, there, there are some exceptions like Grinnell, because there's no crossing at Grinnell. And, and we're actually not doing the Astor Street, any, any work at Astor Street just yet. But, you know, this is Cottonet, similar condition. Dutcher, and so on, Ecker, Ferris. Grinnell is the exception, there's no crossing there. And, and that's Dearman. So, yeah, so, anyway, there's something to work with there. It sounds to me like there's a desire to look at this, obviously, the design has to be looked at more closely. And, and, but in terms of the mechanics of it and the possible placement with, with this feedback from the board, I can go out and, and, you know, do some reconnaissance on this with people who are much more knowledgeable about this than I am.
Well, there's, the, the Kim Lee Horn Group, Janice and I and Larry met Kevin Van Hys. He's the landscape architect working with John Canning for the Astor Street project. So he's another one that came to mind as, might be able to think through, I know Mark doesn't understand why I would want this, but, you know, somebody who might say, oh, what about this, what about this? And it would give us some ideas, but I don't know how much, you know, that would cost. But if it were very modest, I'd say it might be worth it. Just a thought.
I'll let you debate the design. Not my, not my area.
All right.
Well, I can say that, Paul will probably agree with this, is that we did make a, a real effort to keep the size of the sign down as small as possible, and to keep the copy as succinct and, and still legible as possible. So, you know, that's where we are right now with the sizing of, of these plaques. I mean, to Paul's point, we could even look at making it a little bit smaller. But, you know, that, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that the potential sighting of it would be in those bump outs.
That's the perfect place.
Herb extensions, because that would alleviate some of what Larry's point was earlier about hazards, whether, whether it's related to people walking on fro, you know, frozen downhill slopes, or whether it's a tripping hazard, it would get it out of the way.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Right, and, you know, I think, as far as design question, so will I leave that in your hands, the design? Or is that something you want to look, look to us? What, what would you like on that?
I think Larry Shopper, you just said that you could, you know, give us a little feedback from the people that you're dealing with.
I'll help with, I'll help with the mechanics of the placement. I think the design, I, I think it is in our hands, I think, at this point, because we have all the, we have all the planning documents that we can refer back to, how we actually go about it, whether we ask for help or whether we talk about it internally, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll keep involved if, you know, that I hope some others do too, as I like to see this move forward.
Thank you very much.
Know if you'd like us to contribute anything else?
Yeah.
I had a question, which is, not a question, but a request. Earl, you said you might do, spend a little time researching images of the various characters. That would be helpful, no matter, you know, what format they're in, meaning whether they're drawings or photographs. We can always figure a way to normalize those, but if you could take the time, that'd be great.
Well, I'll see what we have, Mark, and I, I'm not sure that, that I, that it would be very successful for us to try to get an image of these, these characters, I like to call them, in the plaque that would be meaningful. A photograph is one thing, or even a, you know, a historical illustration is another, when you see it in print. But when you're putting it in cast bronze, I'm not sure, you know, that it would be very meaningful to anybody. I, I think their stories are, are more illustrative of who they are, or are. But, you know, I can still take a look at that and, and, you know, and see what we've got.
Yeah, I just say, don't prejudge it, let's have some raw material and, and see if something makes sense, because part of the interest is going to be catching the eye, it could be more than just the text. There are people who are a lot more visual than that, and might even be put off by seven lines of text.
I thought of some, again, you're right, this isn't the type, but some image that isn't these individuals, but is an iconic representation of characters from the past. I don't know what this is, that's why.
I wouldn't want to turn them into cartoons.
Oh, no, no, by all means, but something, all right, I won't say anymore, because I'm not the artistic type, but I can see what, when you look at the, the Streetscape page that I referenced, they're trying to get you to think of some kind of consistent image that might go to represent the history of the village, so.
I think, I think Mark's idea wasn't bad to consider as well, which is whether you have a, a design of Central Hall there, or maybe Rip Van Winkle or something that the village is, you know, is a branded image of the village on there. I think that's something to consider as well, for you.
The clock tower seemed, to me, a good idea to me.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's an image for the wayfinding signage, so you can think of that, too.
I think that makes a lot of sense, because it certainly then ties it all together with, you know, that was supposed to be, or conceivably part of the updated street signs, if the street signs ever got updated, right? There was
Yes.
design with the iconic clock tower on it, so, at the top of it.
And it's simple enough that it could look good in bronze, too, I think, you know, just kind of, you know, it's almost like a symbol as opposed to like a real picture.
Right, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Iconic, something that's, that's visual, a symbol that would kind of take its way through. But can Mark, maybe you and I can continue to think about this and invite, you know, Paul and Earl and anybody else into it, and then maybe Sarah Cox and Kathy, and we can get this all moving in the sidewalk or whenever, you know.
Sounds good.
Good.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you, Earl. Thank you very much for your time, we really appreciate your time consideration, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You don't have to, but you don't have to go away.
That's right.
Well, no, we'll, we'll take you off the panel, though, so.
You're off the island, sorry, you're off the island.
That's right.
Stay healthy, stay healthy, we need you healthy.
Bye-bye. Thanks, guys. So Larry, I think you're going to give us an update on village operations?
Yes, so I, I thought I'd kind of go through a little bit of the patchwork, and I'm not trying to do a, a, you know, education seminar, because there's a lot of wide-ranging amounts of information that are out there. But, but I thought, as it relates to the village, that you should know that the, the village is not part of the New York Paws Order. So the, the non-essential workpaws that, you know, everyone is obviously laser-focused on these days, we're not part of that. The local governments are, were subject to an executive order that dates back sometime in March, March 17th or thereabouts. Two oh two dot four is the executive order, and that order, without, I have the text nearby here, without reading it word for word. Basically, it allows us to to determine and have who non-essential personnel are and have those non-essential personnel either work from home or not, or just be home because there isn't work to be done. Without them being charged for leave accruals or anything like that. But the key component of that is that the number of non-essential personnel who are working offsite or not working needs to be at least 50% of the entire workforce. So to translate that to what that means in the village, the village has, depending on how you look at it, the village has about 120 full-time and regular part-time employees. I'm not counting, you know, day camp workers and, you know, summer help. So obviously, that's about 60 people that need to be offsite at any given time. As of right now, and what we've been doing out of what we felt was necessity, not just because of this order, is we've had rotations of people and also outright closures. And if you combine that rotation and the closures, we have, you know, fairly well in excess of 60 that are working or not working offsite. Or put it in another way, we have less than 60 that are onsite at any given time. Another way to look at it. So for example, if you look at, of course, the library is closed, there's, you know, probably a dozen people who would normally be regular part timers and full timers who aren't there or are working at home. DPW, as you probably know, we went very quickly to a rotation where just about half of the staff is home during any given week. There's some fluctuations to that, but half the staff is home during the week and the other half is dedicated 100% to picking up the garbage and recycling during their week here. And then they're home the next week. And, you know, the purpose of that, and just so you know, you know, we didn't, we didn't sit there with our calculators and decide, you know, how many people to keep home and start making our decisions based upon 50%. We made the decisions based upon trying to keep a workforce healthy and have some sort of a backup plan should there be an outbreak of infection within our workforce. So if you have half the staff working at home and the other half in, if someone in one of those groups becomes sick, it has less of a chance to spread. Not a, not 0%, but has less. So that was really our driving force behind all that. So, you know, now we're at the point where you know, we plan to bring back to more complete staffing, certainly our public works department, our water department. We had been rotating out some police officers, just if there were tours where there was more than minimum, more than three people working, we would have a couple stay home, you know, sort of on leave for the day. Again, in an effort to try to not mix the staffing as much as possible or as little as possible. And but we plan to have them come back. There's work that is, although maybe not as essential as picking up the garbage, but there's certainly lots of work that has to be done. And that's not the only function of our public works department. There's lots of work in our water department that needs to get done besides just, you know, emergency repairs and, you know, routine testing of water samples. So and the difference, the other difference too is that, and this doesn't have anything to do with anything changing in terms of the directives from the governor. So all of the discussions about reopening New York are not impacting our operations at this point. That may change with tomorrow's press conference or the next day or next week. I mean, you know, we watch those, it's like must see TV, you know? Because we want to see what's happening and what the directives are. But our staffing is not at all tied to what everyone's focused on now, which is the regional opening and reopening and all the various phases, phase one through four and all of that.
Larry, let me interrupt just for a second. Are you still bound, though, by the executive order that you referred to earlier that
Yeah.
asked you to keep only 50%?
Yes. Yeah, that's still in effect. And, you know, I, we, I think what I heard yesterday, and it's kind of hard to read from the language of the executive order, to be honest with you, I'm not a lawyer. It does look like that executive order number four, the original one, was extended as part of others that were extended to June 6th, I believe. So, you know, so we're still, we're still in need of, you know, keeping compliant with that. So what we're planning, though, is we believe we can still bring back, you know, full staffing in our public works and water department. We have, each of the departments has been working on, in some cases finalized, very detailed protocols that they'll be following in terms of equipment that they're wearing, that using, you know, protective equipment, procedures for sanitization, how they structure, even in public works, how the crews are structured, you know? You know, not riding in, if they are riding in same truck, there's certain things they can't avoid. But they'll be working in fixed crews and not intermingling amongst from crew to crew. So it might be a crew of two or three, and they basically stay together all the time. Again, trying to keep the spread from, keep it to a minimum. You know, there's, we're advising for, you know, personal health checks, temperature checks by the employees. We're not doing it at this point onsite. But we are recommending and asking all the employees to check in the morning and check at night when they're, when they get back from work. So there's a whole list of protocols like that. And and actually, that, you know, some people have asked, well, what's changed now as opposed to, you know, six weeks ago? And I mean, aside from the fact that, you know, it doesn't look like the hospitals are going to be overrun if, God forbid, someone does get sick here. But what's changed is that we know, we know a heck of a lot more. We know how to protect our employees, how to protect the public, you know, from the work that they're doing and from them being in the area. We, so we have those protocols and we have the equipment. We, six weeks ago, we were, as you heard, on the phone to China trying to get equipment. And, you know, now we have it. So there's, there's nothing that they need on a regular basis at this point that we don't have. So that's what's changed. So, so that's the plan from a, from an outside standpoint, you know, police department is back rotating. They'll be pretty much at full rotation, whatever that is. So they're not just working off a minimum staffing. From an office standpoint, that's where the, you know, there's still some decisions to be made on that. We, we, right now, looking at the numbers, and this is where the accounting comes into play. Looking at the numbers, we would not be able to bring back all of our office staff full time right now and still be compliant with the 50% order. So that's okay. You know, the office workers are doing okay. Now, it's not, you know, we're not super productive. I mean, you've heard me say numerous times that we work twice as long and get half as much done, frankly. But at least they can function at home and some do fairly capably. So we're going to continue that rotation at this point, but we are still preparing the offices. We are, we have put in physical barriers in Village Hall anyway, you know, and Recreation Department has as well in anticipation of the public coming back into our buildings. That's still not happening. And we don't expect it to happen certainly before the beginning of June, that June 6th date, we don't expect that to happen. But we are looking at creating well, allowing meetings in person with outside people, non-employees, only if necessary and only by appointment. And we are looking at other more creative ways, which we haven't implemented just yet, but for example, and I know this sounds a little bit crazy, but we have contractors are an interesting breed and they know when the building inspector arrives in the building and they often catch him outside. He may have, you know, kind of windows of time where he encourages meetings in an outdoor setting where you can space yourself out. Outdoor is obviously much more safe than indoors from everything we've heard. And we can encourage those types of meetings to continue to let business get done. So we're trying to be creative about it and safe at the same time. So that's, that's pretty much an update. The courts are being driven by the Office of Court Administration, so it's not up to us at this point. I think they, the last thing I saw was that they would allow the court offices to come back and do court work, but that the court sessions are not happening with public involved from this, from what I've seen anyway, at least on the local level. So we still haven't had court. So they allowed us to have our court clerk come in, which frankly, she's been coming in anyway. I mean, it's just office work. So.
So.
That's it.
Um, I don't know if you would think this was needed, but if you, if you did and you wanted, say, the DPW employees to be able to have a test that they have or don't have the virus, would you be able to ask for that and get it here as a village? Could we do that?
You know, as far as tests for the actual, for the actual infection, you know, I don't think they have any more priority than anyone else does. The, if they have the capacity and they have the availability, though, I think anyone can go, but I, but I don't know that they allow just anyone to go without any symptoms or, you know, concerns. So I'm not, but I think the testing capacity has been built up enough where it is opening up more to the, you know, you know, I was, I was sick back in January, not me, but, you know, I was sick back in January and maybe I want to go and just see if that was, you know, if, or I wasn't feeling well last week, maybe I'll go. I don't know that there's a lot of that going on. I think it's still on a much more priority basis.
That's what I thought. So I, you know, I've been in touch with people, you know, some friends in Indiana where they can, you're, you have no symptoms, you can sign up, you can go and get tested. So I just wondered if, I didn't mean just any old anybody, but if the municipality said, we'd like to have our DPW employees tested on a regular basis so that we can lessen the chance that they'll be getting it from each other. And you ask as a municipality, can you get that?
Well, I will say that.
Say no, but.
They are, they're looking, the county is looking to expand the antibodies test for, you know, kind of the next group of municipal workers beyond first responders. And that could happen as soon as next week. So I think once that happens, you know, we'll be happy to open it up to, you know, I'd say, you know, almost, you know, DPW staff first. Probably the Recreation Department that's been doing their home deliveries. And then probably just, I'd say, you know, Village Hall office staff and even the library if they thought that they were potentially exposed. It's just a good thing to know. You know, so I think that that's, they have enough capacity that it looks like they're going to be opening it up.
Well, that's capacity for the antibody testing now, though, which is different than the testing for the infection itself. So, you know, if someone is.
But I do know that if you want, I've known dozen people that have just gone to their, you know, their GP or they go to, I know, like urgent care, you can just go and get a COVID-19 test now at urgent.
Oh, so you say, you have to say, I feel sick, or you just say, I want it?
I just want to get tested. You know, I was actually talking to one of the doctors from urgent care in Tarrytown the other day, and they said, you know, they test a lot of people. You just call ahead and say, I'd like to get a COVID-19 test, and they can do it. So it's not, it's not through the county, which the antibody test would likely be through the county. They're actually using the county center. I think they've done, what did they say, 2,500 antibody tests already, Larry?
Yeah, it's been, it's been pretty available.
Yeah, so. You know, it's, I think that's probably something people are going to probably getting for the long term anyway.
But. People should understand that the antibody tests are not very accurate at this point.
There is one, the one FDA test, which is the one the county used, there's 12 tests apparently, one of them is supposedly very accurate. But the ones at home where you spit in a cup or even the fingerprint.
No, even the blood drawing tests, maybe there's one.
Yeah. There's only one that's FDA approved right now.
Yeah, we're just going by what the county executive said today, as a matter of fact. So I don't know, I mean. But one, one quick thing. So as far as a policy goes, I, I can tell you from the couple of different sources that I've looked at, as well as other policies of other villages, not that that's necessarily a guiding factor. There's no one that's requiring testing of their employees for the virus itself. That, you know, but only when, you know, it's symptomatic. Now, that could change as the amount of testing capacity increases and improves. You know, it may be, and I mean, that's all of our hopes is that, you know, we could be reassured as often or anytime we need to be reassured, reassured.
Police officers get, have they been given as first responders? Have they gotten tested? Or been allowed to be tested or want to be tested? No?
I don't know. They've been tested for antibodies, but anyone that wanted to, but as far as testing for the virus, no, I don't. You know, look, up until now, and I don't even know if it's now yet. Up until now, it's been at a premium, you know, the people that have been tested, as you know, you know? And it's really, it's really on a basis of symptoms and you know, we haven't had people sick, so that's a good thing.
I have a slightly different issue, different question. You're complying with the regulations in terms of cutting back staff or alternating staff or burrowing them in and out as needed. And it sounds like all basic functions are being taken care of when we are another. A lot of the office stuff can be done online with the DPW is doing an amazing job with short staff and so on. Are you concerned about backlog things or things that might be difficult to get up to speed quickly when, as we begin going more back to normal?
In, in the offices or are you talking about out in the field?
Yeah. I mean, the library is, oh, so the library is closed, the library is closed, so.
Right, right.
Pile of return books the first day, but.
How to balance the budget.
Yeah. Well, no, from an office standpoint, I mean, like I said, we're getting by. Is it running as efficiently as it could? Of course not, but we are getting by.
None of us are.
And no, exactly. And but, but I wouldn't say that we have desks full of, you know, backlog work in terms of our offices. I mean, it's not, it's not crucial. The DPW is a different story, you know, the grass doesn't get cut by staying at home. So. So, you know, that's, there's, there's lots of backlog work there and they've got to start getting to it. And it's, you know, that's where we are.
That's perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, like I said, is, is every single employee capable of working at home, you know, to the same degree as every other employee? No, there's variations, but overall, you know, they are able to function and they are rotating in when they need to be in and getting, you know, worked on the days that they're in, you know, a lot more than when they're at home sometimes. So. I mean, I, look, I can speak from my own experience, which is that, you know, I've gotten into a rhythm now where I'm in the office probably two or three days a week. And on those days when I'm home, I have very specific things that I know I work on when I'm home, that I'm actually more efficient working on at home than I am sitting trying to deal with an office of people coming in and out potentially. So it's, but it's taken six to eight weeks to try to figure this out. This is not something we're used to, you know? So, anyway.
So what you meant when you said we maintain the 50%, but that's because fewer office people will be in and more DPW people will be in.
Yeah, right now, yeah, right now, we're well under the, or well over the requirement of the 50%. And because of the DPW rotation, I mean, that's, you know, eight to 10 people at any given point are not in. When all of those come back, it makes it difficult to then also bring back all of the office staff full time at the same time. We, I don't, we can't do it number wise. So I think, like I said, that's why that, the office rotation is going to continue. And that's not the worst thing in the world to continue because we're, we're keeping up, you know, with this rotation. So. rotation, so, you know, if that changes, if, if we hear something new from the governor, we'll make adjustments, but that's where we are now.
Thank you, this is, I can't imagine how complicated.
It's just, you know, it, there's so many things that are overlapping and confusing, and the simplest directive, it never seems to have enough depth to it that you need, you know, the, the perfect example, just in the last 24 hours, was, was Mark's email yesterday, when, when he said, well, I see landscaping and gardening is opening up statewide, does that mean tree work? Well, you know, and so, I don't know, you know, I read everything I could, and there's, there's nothing about that, so I asked the county executive's office, county executive office thinks that there's going to be more details coming out as soon as tomorrow from the governor's office, so we're all sitting here waiting, I don't know, and that, I thought landscaping was simple, and it's not, so, you know, so it's, it's, that part, that part's complicated. And then, look, I mean, and Brian can speak to this, too, we, we've been getting, you know, a couple of emails here and there, of people who listened to the governor's press conference, they hear something's happening, and they want to know if they can start working on Saturday, the 16th, or whatever the date is, you know, and, and in fact, if you actually dig down, the governor wasn't talking about the mid-Hudson region, they were talking about the Finger Lakes region, and so the answer is, no, you can't, so it's like, but here we are, being the, the interpreter of, of, of a press conference, you know, it's like, it's a crazy position, but it, it's, we're, we're getting used to it.
So what, I just have one last question, so none of our employees have gotten sick, is that?
Uh, no, that's not true, we, we had, we had one person in DPW, another person in, that had a family member that was sick, but I think it's, it's been pretty limited.
And one firefighter.
Firefighter, yes, exactly, not, I mean, you know.
Not necessarily.
Volunteer, yeah, yeah, but, you know, we took all the, all the necessary steps when we found out, and, and, you know, the person, let's say, in the fire department, you know, when they found out, they, we, they pretty quickly established who that person may have been around in the days preceding that, and those people, you know, self-isolated, contacted their own doctor, and followed their doctor's orders, so, and didn't become sick. In the case of DPW, it was, you know, again, quite fortuitous that this particular person was in one day, just was, was not symptomatic, on a day when that person was in to pick up recycling, worked with only two other people that day, and the next day was sick, and those other two people stayed home for at least five days, and, and never became symptomatic. So we, we actually kept them home longer than five days, the people that were in contact with him, so, you know, and, and by the way, the employee's recovering, and we've been in touch, you know, about his eventual return, but, and his whole family got sick, too, so, adult son and his wife.
Good.
Yeah, but overall, I mean, we've been, we've been lucky in that standpoint, and, you know, if, if something happens, well, we, we have, we have the protocols, whether they work or not, we'll see, but we're ready.
Great, thank you.
All right, so that's it, anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn if I get a second?
There you go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll have a, a little bit longer agenda on Monday night, actually, it's fairly, fairly lengthy, but hopefully not too long in time, but, but obviously, you have your public hearing, so that'll be, you know, that'll, that'll take some time.
Great.
Right?
All right. Stay safe, everybody.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.